...on draft wind energy regulations, and that is not the case. The draft regulations are available on the Planning Department website, but there will not be a public hearing for at least 60 days on those proposed drafts. So if you're here to speak on wind energy, this is not on our agenda today. Please note that the Planning Commission action today is final on items 1.1, 1.2, 1.4, 1.5, 1.6, and 4.6A. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council by filing a notice of appeal with the city clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to either the City Council or the County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held May 27, 2015, and I think we've noted several revisions for the record that will be made to those minutes. So is there a motion for approval of the minutes as revised?
So moved. Second?
Call the vote, please.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yeah, abstain.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Carried, seven to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request for someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak on those items. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and you state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted on upon total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes. First item is item 1.1, special permit number 15023 to allow Emerald Care Center to operate as a residential healthcare facility in the AG zoning district on property generally located at 5500 South Cottington Avenue. Item 1.2 is special permit number 15031 to allow the sale of alcohol for consumption on the premises on property generally located at 1,000 Saunders Avenue. Next item is item 1.3, special permit number 15032 for the construction of a parking lot in a residential district with a reduction of the side and front, the front and side guard setbacks on property generally located at 710 South 36th Street. Item 1.4 is waiver number 15010 to request a waiver to the subdivision ordinance 26.23.140E to allow a lot with two frontages for the final plat of Rolling Hills Ridge, 5th Edition on property generally located at 6544 South 19th Street. Waiver number 15011 for the request to waive street trees, sidewalks, paving of Calvert Street, and lot width to depth ratio requirements for the final plat, Robicdo Row Edition on property generally located at 3658 Folsom Street. And the final item is waiver number 15012, a waiver for a lot depth of less than 90 feet on property generally located at 7279 Yankee Woods Drive. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on the consent agenda?
I see none.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item on the consent agenda? If so, please stand and state that item.
All right, seeing no one, hang on just one second. Jerry, can I ask you a quick question? Do we have to pull that off the consent agenda? Okay, all right, all right. Seeing no one that wants to speak, we will then entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Go ahead.
Move approval.
Call the vote, please.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero. This is final action on special permit number 15023, special permit number 15031, waiver numbers 15010, 15011, and 15012 unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days.
All right, at this time, I would ask Jerry to call the items on today's agenda for which there has been a written request for deferral.
And the applicant for the following two items has submitted a written request for a two-week deferral, delaying public hearing before the Planning Commission until June 24, 2015. Item 4.6A, change of zone number 15015, a change of zone from AG Agricultural District to R3 Residential District on property generally located at 5,000 South 84th Street, and item 4.6B, special permit number 15028, a request for a community unit plan to allow for the development of a 34-lot subdivision with waivers to setbacks, lot width, lot area, and private roadway design standards on property generally located at 5,000 South 84th Street.
All right, we will entertain a motion on the request for deferral.
Move for deferral. Second.
Okay. Is, all right, and we'll call the vote on that.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried on those two items for deferral to June 28, eight to zero.
Okay, was there anyone here that wishes to testify on those two items that was deferred until June 24? All right, seeing no one, will you please read the additional items on today's agenda for which there is a written request for deferral?
Okay, item number 4.7A, change of zone 15014 for residential, R1 residential to R2 residential on property generally located at southwest of the intersection of Old Cheney Road and Norman Road, and item 4.7B, special permit number 15035 to allow the construction of a residential healthcare facility for up to 285 residents and to allow waivers to the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance to adjust the height requirement and eliminate block length and pedestrian easement requirements on property generally located on the west portion of the Knowles Country Club, Norman Road, and Old Cheney Road.
All right, we'll entertain a motion for the deferral.
So move.
Second.
Call the vote.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Was there anyone here wishing to testify on those two items today rather than waiting until June 24? All right.
Okay, motion for deferral carried, eight to zero.
We will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay, I'll be calling three associated items together. I need to note that Commissioner Sunderman has declared a conflict of interest on these three items. First item is 4.1A, comprehensive plan amendment number 15001 to amend the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan by changing the future land use plan designation from residential urban density to commercial on property generally located in the Yankee Hill Road and South 40th Street area and to modify the location of a future bike trail. Item 4.1B is annexation number 15005 to annex approximately 86 acres more or less, including adjacent rights of way, generally located at South 40th Street and Yankee Hill Road. And I should note that on item 4.1A, staff recommendation is for approval. On the annexation, staff recommendation is for conditional approval. And then the final associated item is 4.1C is change of zone number 15016, Wilderness Creek Planned Unit Development for a change of zone from AG Agricultural District to R3 PUD, including areas designated for H4 general commercial development, R3 residential development, and R5 residential development on property generally located at South 40th Street and Yankee Hill Streets for a planned unit development designation of said property and for approval of a development plan which proposes modifications to the zoning ordinance and land subdivision ordinance to allow for a mix of commercial and residential uses. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
I see none.
Good afternoon. Kristi Icorn, planning staff. What I'd like to do today is to go through some of the key points that were in this staff report regarding the Wilderness Creek proposal. The proposal consists of three different applications. As Jerry stated, we have a comp plan amendment, we have an annexation, and we have a change of zone, which is a planned unit development overlay. If we start first with the comp plan amendment, what that part of the project does is it changes the comprehensive plan to reflect this area as commercial along Yankee Hill Road and residential south of the commercial zoning, the red blob as we see it in the comprehensive plan. And one of the reasons that this change is being made is that there is a pipeline in Yankee Hill Road that runs from approximately southwest 8th Street all the way to 84th Street. It then goes north. And due to that pipeline, we have had to rethink some of our land use provisions as they were originally reflected in the comprehensive plan. The other change that happens with the comp plan amendment is it more accurately reflects where a proposed bike path will be built sometime in the near future. It aligns it more with the streets rather than showing it go through areas where homes are already built and lots have already been platted. Let's take a little closer look at the area we're talking about. The project area runs all the way from South 33rd Street to South 40th Street, south of Yankee Hill Road. This area today has been preliminarily platted. It was shown for single and attached single-family lots, and it was preliminarily platted back in 2006. At, in 2006, when this was preliminarily plotted, we weren't thinking as much as we are today about that pipeline and the impacts of that pipeline, and we didn't have set in stone what the hazard area or the pipeline planning area would be along Yankee Hill Road. So with this new project, we know that there is a 221-foot pipeline planning area that runs along Yankee Hill on the south side, and the pipeline planning area actually runs along the north side as well. With the opportunity for this development to remove some of the proposed dwelling units from that pipeline planning area, we can then move those dwelling units further south. We can do them as attached single-family or townhomes or as single-family developments on a little bit smaller lots than what had originally been proposed with the Wilderness Hills preliminary plat. So the new design will show commercial, 220,000 square foot of commercial from 33rd Street to 40th Street. It will also show 300 apartment units as well as 110 single or two-family, or sorry, single or attached single-family units south of that commercial area. This area today is currently outside of the city limits, so they have applied for an annexation to bring it inside the city limits. It is adjacent to the city limits, and it can be served by sewer and water. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to come up and explain the application a little bit better. If there are any specific questions with regard to the staff report or the area, I'd be happy to answer those before I turn it over to the applicant.
Any questions for Kristi? All right.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Michael Reardon appearing on behalf of Lincoln Federal Bank Corp, Inc., who is the owner of the property involved in these applications. With me is Brad Marshall from Olson and Associates to answer any of the technical questions you might have. Our presentation will be brief. I think Kristi did a good job in outlining what the proposal is about. Originally, back in 2006, when I appeared in front of this body, the thinking was, was for predominantly single-family and townhomes and apartments in this particular area. We then subsequently found out within the last few months, I guess, about this pipeline issue and all the ramifications it may have, and so we decided, frankly, because of liability issues and that type of thing, to redo our thinking on this, and we approached planning and Kristi with this particular proposal. And we think it's a good compromise. We think it fits. I might add that we are in agreement with all of the conditions set forth in all three of the applications. We'd like to thank the Planning Department, especially Kristi, for working with us on this. As Kristi indicated, if this is approved, it would allow 200,000 square feet of a commercial area and 110 single-family or detached family units. And I might add also that we're asking for two waivers, and the planning staff is in agreement with the allowing those particular waivers, and if there's any questions about the waivers, I'll defer to Brad on that. But with that, I'd attempt to answer any questions that commissioners may have of me or Brad also.
I have one for you. I know in your letter of application, you mentioned that you were going to have a meeting with the homeowners association of Wilderness Hills.
And we did have a meeting with the board of Wilderness Hills.
And how did that go? Were they in support? Did they have questions?
Generally in support of it. There's always questions, but I think we answered them sufficiently, and we think they're on board.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
One, you said two waivers?
Yes.
So could you go through which ones they are? I see one here.
I don't have the staff report in front of me, but there I believe there was one for block length, in which we're basically adding pedestrian easements to be added back to the bike trail. And then, let's see here, so I do have it here.
Does the other one, there's a site-specific conditions, change of zone, 2.2, 2.7, is that, is that the second one?
Kristi, would you mind opening them?
On page 53 of the staff report. It's the block length and double frontage block.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Oh, okay, so these are not additional waivers, they're the waivers that were in the staff report. Okay, sorry, I misunderstood.
Yes, they were included in there. There's a double frontage portion that is shown. It just, you have a couple lots.
They're not an addition to.
They're not addition, correct.
Got it, thank you, sorry.
Can you tell us a little more about that double frontage lot, where it's going to be and what's kind of going on that creates that?
Yes, absolutely. There's the townhome section that is just on the south side of 37th Street, 37th and Crescent. There's a couple of lots that, there are about five, four or five lots that will have lots or Public Street on the north and the south side of it. Oh, and then also, and then also along, yeah, that, those are actually it. That is actually it. There's some areas that are a little bit more tight, but they do have additional common space between them. Oh, yeah, absolutely. So the waiver includes these particular lots right here because they have Twin Creek on the south side and then Crescent along the north side.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, do we have additional testimony in support of the application? Do we have any testimony in opposition to the application? Additional questions for Kristi?
I do have some. Kristi, on the staff report on page 58, in number five, it says, it's kind of conflicting information here about this long block. It says the commercial area should meet all pedestrian deciding standards, and the easements are not being waived, but then down below it says it is being waived, so I'm a little confused as to.
The block length requirement is not being waived, so you can have blocks that are over 1,300 square feet. But the pedestrian easements that are required every 1,000 feet are still required as part of this plan.
So they'll have to have some kind of a sidewalk or something in between the blocks to make the connectivity?
Yes, for any blocks that are over 1,000 feet, they will have to do that.
Okay. I had another question, too, and I'm not, I wasn't sure who to ask on this one. It talks about a, and this is probably just a technical definition I'm not familiar with, it talks about the bike trail going over Yankee Hill Road, and it says a grade separated crossing. Can you explain that to me a little bit? Is that just a marked, you know, like having a curb cut and stuff, or?
It's, it's, my understanding is it is something more than just a painted crossing. Perhaps David could explain that a little bit better.
Brandon Garrett, Planning Department. A grade separated crossing is just where the trail is crossing the roadway at a different grade, so it's either going over or under, under or over.
So does that mean there's going to be a bridge there, or?
I think in, more than likely, it would go under the street because there is kind of a drainage way through there. So I think the standard practice is to just kind of put both of them in the same box culvert.
So something similar to maybe, maybe not as big, but like 27th and Capitol Parkway?
Yes, much smaller, yeah.
Okay. And then can you show me on the, I want to make sure I was understanding the map on this bike trail revision. So the white X's, that's, it's being removed there, and then it's going to follow the black line more along the drainage there that's already in place?
So the existing comprehensive plan shows the bike trail going where the white X's are, and obviously, that area is already developed, so this is just a cleanup item. We're going to make sure that this is shown, and it also helps to put people on notice in the area where we're pretty sure the future bike trail will be. We spoke with the Parks and Recs Department, and this is kind of their best estimate of where it will be going through this area.
Great, thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions for staff?
Kristi, the pipeline issue, that only goes for residential. There's no issue with commercial development.
No issue with commercial, it's more, it's more uses where they have more, they're more vulnerable to the pipeline explosion people that cannot quickly remove themselves from the area. So it would be dwelling units, it would be daycare facilities, and it would be K through 12 schools.
Okay.
I have one more question for you. Were you present or was someone from the staff present at the meeting they held with the HOA?
I was not present for that meeting. It was my understanding it was a small meeting. I don't know that we were not invited to that meeting.
Any other questions for staff? Right. Applicant, you have an opportunity for rebuttal.
We leave that an opportunity.
Okay. We will go forward with entertaining a motion, and I believe they have to be called separately, Jerry?
That is correct. Okay, first item is comprehensive plan amendment number 15001 to amend the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan by changing the future land use plan designation from residential urban density to commercial on property generally located in the Yankee Hill Road and South 40th Street area and to modify the location of a future bike trail. Staff recommendation is for approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to thank the developer for reaching out to the neighbors and making sure that that communication happens. I appreciate that. I think this looks like a decent project, and I appreciate also how it kind of follows the, you know, eases it back into, from commercial to apartments to townhomes, and then finally to, to single-family. It's a nice transition, and I appreciate that.
Any other comments? All right, we'll call the vote.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next item is annexation number 15005 to annex approximately 86 acres more or less, including adjacent rights of way, generally located at South 40th Street and Yankee Hill Road. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All right, I think annexation is definitely appropriate in this incident, instance, people living in the area probably already think that it's part of the city. So let's, call the vote, please.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Change of zone number 15016, Wilderness Creek Planned Unit Development for a change of zone from AG Agricultural District to R3 PUD, including areas designated for H4 general commercial development, R3 residential development, and R5 residential development on property generally located at South 40th and Yankee Hill Streets for a planned unit development designation of said property and for approval of a development plan which proposes modifications to the zoning ordinance and land subdivision ordinance to allow for a mix of commercial and residential uses. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Again, this looks like a good project for the area, and I'm going to support the application. Call the vote, please.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Change of zone number 15005 to annex approximately 86 acres more or less, including adjacent rights of way, generally located at South 40th Street and Yankee Hill Road. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All right, I think annexation is definitely appropriate in this incident, instance, people living in the area probably already think that it's part of the city. So let's, call the vote, please.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Change of zone number 15016, Wilderness Creek Planned Unit Development for a change of zone from AG Agricultural District to R3 PUD, including areas designated for H4 general commercial development, R3 residential development, and R5 residential development on property generally located at South 40th and Yankee Hill Streets for a planned unit development designation of said property and for approval of a development plan which proposes modifications to the zoning ordinance and land subdivision ordinance to allow for a mix of commercial and residential uses. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Again, this looks like a good project for the area, and I'm going to support the application. Call the vote, please.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Change of zone number 15016, Wilderness Creek Planned Unit Development for a change of zone from AG Agricultural District to R3 PUD, including areas designated for H4 general commercial development, R3 residential development, and R5 residential development on property
The eventual purchaser is trying to see how to orient the investment that they want to make. And they've basically said, tell us the rules, we'll follow them.
Any other questions? Maya?
Do you have a little bit of background on why the City Council denied this the last time?
Last time, I think it was a head shop that wanted to buy the property. And there was a negative reaction from the community that that would be expanded, and so it didn't happen.
Any other questions for Mr. Landis?
Do you know if the neighborhood meeting was held?
Yes, it was held. It was held in Antelope Park.
All right, any other questions? Thank you. Do we have any additional testimony in support of this application?
Jeff Barclay. I'm the adjacent landowner, and I definitely want to support what David said. We definitely want to know the rules and find a way to put something really nice there.
Any questions? Thank you. Did you give us your address? I'm sorry.
Seventy-five ten Glen Oaks Drive, six eight five one six.
Thank you. Is there an additional testimony in support of the application? Do we have testimony in opposition? Seeing none, do we have, come up with any other questions? All right, we will go forward with entertaining a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
I drive by this piece of property frequently because it's not too far from where I live. And I just want to, I think this is a good opportunity. It's kind of a blighted corner, so I'm happy to see that this is naturally taking place. And I look forward to seeing something there that will be back on the tax rolls and adding some value to the inner city.
Call the vote, please? Cornelius?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
Harris?
Shear? Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero. The next two items are associated, so I'll be calling them together. First item is 4.3A Annexation Number 15004 to annex approximately twenty-one acres more or less, including adjacent rights of way generally located at forty-nine forty-nine Yankee Hill Road between South Forty-eighth and South Fifty-second Streets. The next item is Change of Zone Number 15013 Eastmont at Yankee Hill Planned Unit Development for a change of zone from AG Agriculture to R3 Residential PUD on property generally located at South Fifty-second Street and Yankee Hill Road for a planned unit development designation of said property and for approval of a development plan which proposes modifications to the zoning ordinance and land subdivision ordinance to allow residential healthcare facility and associated uses, office uses and residential uses per the R3 zoning district. Staff recommendation on the annexation is conditional approval. Staff recommendation on the change of zone is also for conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
I see none.
Kristi Icorn, Planning Staff. I'd like to approach this application similar to the application that we reviewed a short while ago. I'll go through some of the key points that were in the staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions with regards to what's in the staff report. I'll then ask the applicant to come up and explain the project, and then I'll come back up and answer any additional questions that you might have. The first thing is to get a good idea of where this project is located. As Jerry stated, it is a two-part project. It is both an annexation as well as a change of zone with a PUD or Planned Unit Development overlay. This project is also located along Yankee Hill Road. It is located between the future South Forty-eighth Street and the existing South Fifty-second Street. It consists of approximately twenty acres. Fifteen of those acres is going to be utilized in a Phase One for a residential healthcare facility. The remaining number of acres will be built out in Phase Two. And they will consist of some O-three office uses as well as some residential uses and potentially residential healthcare uses. This particular property has the same issue as the Wilderness Creek property that we just talked about in that there is a pipeline that runs along Yankee Hill Road, and there is a two-hundred-and-twenty-one-foot pipeline planning area which limits the kind of uses that can be located within that two-hundred-and-twenty-one feet. It limits dwelling units. It also limits daycares and schools for K through twelve. In order to not have commercial go from Twenty-seventh Street all the way out to Eighty-fourth Street, we have to look at development and creative ideas for both promoting residential as well as not allowing residential within the area of the pipeline planning area. And one thing that the applicant has done on this particular project has really come up, they have really come up with a creative and unique design in order to pull their building back and put their dwelling units closer to the residential, the acreages that are located to the south, and to put the commercial or the common areas where folks will eat and gather their business offices and those types of uses up closer to Yankee Hill and within the pipeline planning area. Some of the waivers that have been requested as part of this application include an increase in height, and that is to go from thirty-five feet to fifty feet. Staff was in support of the increase in height because the building is angled, and so only a very small portion of the building that would be fifty feet in height is within forty feet of the acreages to the south. There has also been a request to, with regards to signage. And they'd like to have O-three signage for the residential healthcare facility lots as well as the proposed O-three use lots up in the northwest corner, or northeast corner of the site. Staff is supportive of this. Both of those are along Yankee Hill Road, which is a arterial street. There would not be O-three signage in the area to the south where future residential, single-family or attached single-family units have been proposed. Staff has also asked the applicant for a landscape plan, a more detailed landscape plan than what was included in this packet. And the applicant has agreed to provide that, which would provide screening along the south property line where there are currently acreages. And the required screening would meet that as if this area was being developed with apartments. So it would meet the multifamily screening requirement for buildings that would exceed the height that is allowed in the zoning district. The parking standard for developments such as these is one stall for every four residents and two stalls for every three employees on the largest shift. The applicant meets those parking requirements, and they have not asked for a waiver to parking. They are providing underground parking underneath the independent living facility, which helps foster green space and open space, and also helps provide buffers between the residential to the south, the acreages to the south of this development. In total, this approves three hundred persons who could reside in the residential healthcare facility. And it also approves some O-three uses and residential uses along South Fifty-second Street. The number of dwelling units that can be approved under the R3 zoning is just under the R3 zoning. There is no specific number that is tied to that. So they would still need to meet all subdivision requirements other than the two that have been requested as part of this staff report. Does anybody have any questions for me at this time?
I do. You can go next. The motion to amend was circulated prior to this. And as I understand it, and obviously I'll ask the applicant about it, everything's in agreement except the "and" area three part of the motion to amend. And so why is staff not in favor of the "and" three?
This area in the comprehensive plan is shown for urban residential development. And it is our belief that residential healthcare facilities fit well within the urban residential land use. The O-three is in office land use. It's becoming more commercial in nature. We often use it as a transition. So to insert a transition between two residential land uses on the east side of South Fifty-second Street and the residential land use that we are approving with this healthcare facility didn't seem to make sense. It didn't seem to be a good transition from the east side to the west side. The O-three zoning area also has no specific site plan approved with it. So if we say that all O-three zoning or uses that are allowed in the O-three are permitted along South Fifty-second Street, then there's no, that's a broad category of uses that could be permitted there. And we feel that it should transition from a residential healthcare facility to single or two-family residential or another part of the residential healthcare facility to the acreages which are on the east side of South Fifty-second Street.
Could you orient me?
Sure.
On the map, on what that is, and then answer Tracy's questions.
So this is Area One, Area Two, Area Three, and Area Four. And I agree that for the motion to amend, staff agrees with all of the conditions except for the first one. And that is on Area Three, this area here, staff is recommending that it still be used for urban residential uses such as single or two-family uses, what's allowed per the R3 zoning district, or for expansion of this residential healthcare facility. And that is just so that we have a smooth transition to the east. Now, in the future, the applicant could come back in and say, we'd like to have different zoning or rezone this area within the PUD to something else, something more specific, something with a site plan, something that perhaps shows the layout, the screening and landscaping that perhaps shows the parking, how the building might be oriented. And then we would, could go back and revisit the site. But today, for the lack of site plan or specifics in that particular area, staff didn't feel comfortable recommending approval for all of those uses that could be done in the O-three on this particular lot. The O-three to the north, again, this is the pipeline planning area. We can't put residential dwelling units in that area. And so it makes sense that we could allow O-three uses in the corner along an arterial street and adjacent to where we know there aren't going to be other residential uses, single, two-family residential uses because those would all be prohibited to the west of this particular lot.
So as I read this amendment, to me, it's saying that you can have O-three in both Area Two and Area Three.
Correct. They would like the motion to amend to include Area Three because the staff report conditions of approval say that the O-three land uses would only apply to Area Two. So their motion to amend would include Area Two and Three.
So as the original application came forward, only that northeast Area Two section would be approved as O-three?
As the conditions of approval in the staff report are written today, you are correct.
Dennis?
I have no.
Orbit, go ahead.
Is the entire area of Area Two in the pipeline planning area? It looks like it is on the drawing that we have, but is that right? Okay.
And Tracy, you had more?
Ready for something else? Can you show me on the map where the entrances and exits are? So I understand one's on Fifty-second and one's on Forty-eighth, is that correct?
Correct.
Can you point them out to me?
There is an entrance located here, which one of the conditions of approval in the staff report was that their entrance should line up with accesses to the preliminary plat to the west, or to the, yeah, to the west. And then there is also an access point located on Fifty-second Street.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I was looking at those properly. And then also on the map, I see reference to two retention ponds, but I really only see the one in the northwest corner.
I'll let the applicant address that question.
Regarding the pipeline planning area, the residential units are far enough away from that that that's not an issue, is that...
That's correct. The health department's concern is really that two-hundred-and-twenty-one feet. And so all of the beds that are associated with this facility and dwelling units are located south of this line. This is the pipeline planning area line. So it would, it would be, everything's located south of there.
Okay.
But the office can be there.
But the office, yeah, commercial uses, office uses. We have in the past in pipeline planning areas, we've had apartments that are built south of the pipeline planning area, but they might put their swimming pool or the clubhouse in the area of the pipeline planning area.
Thanks.
Okay, so Area Four is residential?
Yes.
Okay. Staff wants Area Three to stay residential and not O-three. O-two, Area Two can be office. Don't we typically have office as a transition between residential areas?
We do have office as a transition area, but this area and the use of this facility, which is adjacent to the west, these are residential units. This is residential dwelling. So it doesn't seem to make sense when we're going from sort of a higher-density residential to then put more office uses in the middle as we then go further to lower-density residential uses on the east side of South Fifty-second Street. So all of the uses that could be permitted in the O-three could be permitted here without a site plan, without any specifics. And so at this time, and with this application, the planning department is saying, we don't think that's appropriate at this location because we haven't seen any specific site plan that would show that this would be a good transition. Right now, it looks as if you would have office uses in between two residential areas.
Okay. So what you're saying is you're not saying no forever. You're just saying no today?
Yes.
Any other questions for Kristi? All right, we'll take testimony from the applicant.
Good afternoon. My name is Carol Ernst. I'm the executive director at Eastmont Towers. We're currently at Sixty-third and O Street. I think probably many of you are aware of Eastmont Towers. Fifty years ago, we filed for our Articles of Incorporation, and we opened in nineteen sixty-eight. We're an independent, not-for-profit continuing care retirement community. Being a standalone, independent, not-for-profit is not easy these days. And we're proud that we've been able to do that and be a part of Lincoln for that long. Healthcare is huge to us, and we offer a life care product that is unique here in this area. We love our O Street location, it's wonderful. But we are landlocked and have been landlocked for a very long time. After several years of strategic planning, the Board of Directors, along with our administration, has come up with a plan to have a second campus on the Yankee Hill, the twenty acres that you see. And that campus will be similar to what we have currently today. It enables us to reach out to a part of Lincoln and south and beyond that we've not been able to do, that has not been part of our market share in the past. It is also going to allow us to have walking paths and amenities and all kinds of things that we currently cannot have and are restricted with regard to our buildings. Three of our four buildings are six stories tall, and one is three stories tall. And the green space is limited, to say the least. So we're very excited about being able to do this project. We offer independent living, assisted living, skilled rehab nursing, long-term care, hospice and palliative care. So in this plan, we would see a hundred and two independent living apartments, forty-eight assisted living apartments, sixteen of which, approximately sixteen of which, would be memory care, and then twenty-four nursing facility, which would include both long-term care and rehab. We would like the ability to expand in the future. Those five acres are wide open at this point in time. We might want to be able to expand that campus, but we want a flexibility to perhaps meet the needs, the growing needs of the consumer in the future. We know that the consumer, ten, fifteen years from now, is going to have... We know that the consumer 10, 15 years from now is going to have different expectations than our current consumers. We're already seeing those changes occur, so.
Good afternoon. My name's Kent See-Craft, attorney for Christian Retirement Homes, Inc. John Walters, the president of the organization's also here if you have any questions, along with Brad Marshall from Olson and Associates. As Christy did a nice job summarizing, this is an annexation of 20 acres. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan of where we're growing along Yankee Hill Road, the R three PUD. We did ask for the waivers and the planning department is supportive of our waivers as Christy outlined. We did have a neighborhood meeting that was well-attended. We're up against acreages. If you can picture the comp plan, kind of starting here at 52nd, up and down 56th Street, there's a lot of acreages, and so this is the part where urban forms coming up against existing acreages. We had a good attendance. We did this before our submittal. They gave us a couple of good ideas that allowed us to make a tweak here, which was good. We then applied, and then they asked us a couple of questions we didn't have answers to. So we wrote them a letter following up with those questions, and nobody contacted me with any more questions, so I, hopefully, we've got everything. They were interested in particularly, what's this mean now that the city limits is up against them? Does that mean automatic annexation, those type of things? If and when the city does, it does not mean automatic annexation, but if and when the city wants to annex them, then there's the question of what happens with their water and their sewer. So those were the type of questions we were able to answer for them as we go forward. I do, we did hand out a motion to amend. I think everybody has that. You've heard that everybody's content on both sides of the ledger on everything, but that funny yellow, at least it was yellow in the version I sent out. And so let me talk to you about that, if I may. As Dennis pointed out, this is the infamous 120, or 221-foot line from Yankee Hill Road. And as you can see, or maybe this map helps you to see, here's the blue line again, one third of our site is, you know, how do I want to say this? This gas line requirement is not on the books. It's a health department request. You know, they're weighing risk and reward, and we do, and everybody else in this room has to weigh those things. So it's not had a public hearing as a requirement, but it's a strong recommendation, and the planning department is following that recommendation. We did not want to look like we were putting our guests in danger, so we got creative and we put all the housing units above that line, and we were able to get our administrative kind of front office things in that area, which was permitted. But as you can see, the rest of that 221, we can't use it. And it's, it's a, it's a real hardship, given that we were the, we're one of the first guinea pigs discovering that this is the new standard without it being on the books. So we chose not to fight that part, but what we felt we needed instead was, we needed to have office, not that we know we're going to do office, because what we really hope is we keep growing this, and it continues to be independent assisted memory care living. But in the event we saturate the market or whatever, we think office that deals with senior-type activities could be very cool and appropriate here. And so we're asking for, as you've identified, parcel three to also be included. You've got to realize that our buildings, we start at four stories and three, and so it's not like we're a single-family quiet neighborhoods. So for purposes of traditional buffering, I think it is appropriate to have office between our big mass buildings that we will have there along the way. The handout I gave you is, the, the planning department and the planning commission's in a tough situation trying to figure out this gas line. Because when you lose a third of your site, that's, that's a lot of real estate to figure out what to do with. So I'm empathetic, but what has happened here is I've given you examples of the other commercial zones up and down Yankee Hill Road that's affected arguably by this gas line, and you will see that on the other ones, in fact, the very, our first one is us. So if you go back and would grant us the office use in what we call area three, we'd be 467 feet from Yankee Hill Road, the depth of office. The one you just approved, the agenda before, or two agendas before, you just granted them 550 feet of depth of commercial activity to make, to help them compensate for what they have to deal with, with this gas line easement. So, and then I've given you the others that were already on the books, and they're even deeper. Now, some of that's because they're on the corner, so they've got two arterial streets, so I can understand some of that depth. But if you are not able to support us, you're only giving us 220, or the 221. And I think that just presents a hardship to nonprofit. Like I said, we want to grow. We don't want to put office in here someday, but if we did, we'd rather not have to come back because it's not cheap and it takes a lot of time, and I think it's best to lay our intentions out right now that, what the uses would be. I've learned that that's fair, more fair to the neighbors because someday the acreages could redevelop or infill themselves, and the more we put things on the books, the more everybody understands the rules of engagement. I do want to thank Steve Hendrickson and Christy because they've spent a lot of time interest. Christy got invited to the neighborhood meeting and the saint came and sat through it, and so we do appreciate that. She was very helpful in answering some questions that the neighbors had about the process and about annexation. With that, Carol and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. Oh, detention. You're, you're reading the map right. The main detention area is in this corner because the bulk of the site drains this way. But there's a little back part of our site, very little, that goes to the south, and so there's a detention pond. Don't hold me to it, but somewhere back here to catch the water that goes, is in the sub-basin going the other direction.
Questions for Kent?
No question.
Dennis?
This, this might be better for Brad, but you probably can answer it. I want to go back to area two. The way I read the drawing, and the drawing may be preliminary in terms of a site plan, but how will area two receive access from the street? Because it looks to me like the only way is up through the exist, or the, the drive that you show. Is there a possibility within that 221 feet to provide access to, to an O three at the corner? I don't know that that's possible.
First of all, we were seeking access onto Yankee Hill ourselves, and Public Works was not in favor of that.
Right.
So let's make the assumption that nobody's going to get access on Yankee Hill Road. So there is 52nd Street. When we come develop this area, we will be paving 52nd. The standards would allow an access point that close to the intersection. Obviously, the standards would allow the access to the back. Our plan is to have, and it's hard to see on this drawing, but we have a loop road. We're coming out there. So we think that frames, again, a potential office site because we will be putting a road network in so people can circulate fully around not only area two and three, but back to area one.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
So you could potentially further that little access point. I know it kind of goes up and around your building there, but you could maybe make a Y off of that to get to area two if you needed to.
That's correct. That, see if I'm understanding you. You're saying we could bring area two back to this access road?
Yes.
The dilemma is it's a long ways back to 48th Street, but it's definitely connected.
Is that just, is that internal access road, just one lane, or is it?
Well, it'll be two-way, but it's intended to be not a, a street.
Right.
So it'd be more of a private road net, or private drive that we'd have to accelerate into a, a street.
Other questions?
How many stories are the buildings planned to be?
The independent living is three stories above underground parking. So the underground parking is mostly, you know, walkout levels, so to speak, and then three stories above that. Then the assisted, skilled, those are two, those are two-story buildings, and the, the front is more of a walkout type. It includes a health and wellness area, a large health and wellness area in addition to a community and administrative area, and that's two floors also.
I have a question for you, kind of about this type of business. Just because I kind of, because I was lazy and could, didn't have time to look it up on the internet. Can you kind of give me an idea of what normal census is for, like, when you're looking at your one on O Street? You know, it says in your letter that you have 269 available units. What kind of a census do you, on average, keep?
We're currently running between 240 and 250 across the campus. We als, excuse me, we also have a six-bed hospice facility on Pioneers.
Do you think that that's pretty average for the industry for census levels?
Yeah, it really varies from community to community. Independent living has had strong census, pretty much across Lincoln. That's been our experience. Assisted living has had extremely strong census. Most of the time, we have waiting lists for assisted living. For long-term care, we often have a waiting list for, for that. Rehab, a, a little bit less so because there are some newer facilities.
So you would expect about the same ratios probably for this new facility?
We did a marking, marketing analysis to sort of look at the demographics and look at the growth and look at the aging population before we even decided whether or not this made sense, and then also did a financial feasibility, and, and we feel very strongly that that growth and those demographics support that.
Thank you.
I would just add that the neighborhood meeting was engaged and long. It was, it was a good kind of long because people were asking lots of questions. Again, I'd like to thank the planning department. Christy did a great job. Kent did a great job, but for the most part, people knew who Eastmont was, and what we heard mostly was, we know this is, needs to be developed, we're happy it's you instead of someone else. So that was good, good to hear.
Any other questions?
I may add a comment about the accessibility to area three also. I may just point out, because when I'm looking at the site plan, the difficulty of getting access to lot three in the future, if we're, what if you had office isolated in two, 52nd Street will be signalized someday, and so you'll, we'll have to meet standards for storage lengths for left-turn lanes and so forth, and so we may meet design standards to push that access as close to Yankee Hill, but I point out, it may not be the ideal situation for access to an individual lot up there. Thought I'd add that.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have additional testimony in support of the application? Anyone wishing to testify in opposition? Questions for Christy?
I have one. Christy, you mentioned that maybe in the future with a site plan, the planning department might look upon area three differently. Is, is there any possibility or is there any precedent for allowing the use, but on the condition that the site plan be satisfactory to the planning director or something of that nature?
By coming back through, that, that can certainly be a condition that can be added. I think that generally, the O three zoning district is a use permit district, and the O three zoning district, just like the B two and the B five districts, are ones that you are not allowed to do unless you have a use permit approved. And the purpose of the use permit is to have a site plan that generally lays out the specifics of the site to give the neighborhood a better idea of what to expect when that, when that comes in. I think that, like I stated before, I don't know that we would object to O three in the future with a good site plan and seeing how the rest of the site has developed and how the, the residential to the south may develop. I think that along Yankee Hill Road, there is a lot of open space that is also left, and I don't know that if staff in the planning department were, if an idea was proposed to us to have an office building up here with O three, that we would necessarily object to having additional office in that pipeline planning area. But the way that this is laid out, the, the applicant at this time is choosing not to do that, but in order to facilitate use of the land in the pipeline planning area, again, that isn't something that we would turn our backs to at any time in the future. We are just looking for something a little bit more specific before rezoning the property.
But during the use permit process, even if we rezone it to O three now, during the use permit process, they still have to come back here, right, and get site plan approval? No? They would not?
Not necessarily, not necessarily, because I believe that it's worded, and I'd have to double-check, that they can come back and develop this administratively, as long as they adhere to the land uses that are part of the approval process with this planned unit development. So if you, if you have O three there, then they could come back and show a site plan to the planning, planning department, to the planning director, and administratively, he could prove the site plan for this area, but it wouldn't have to come back through a public hearing process.
But you could also say no.
We could say no with the site plan, but it would be, once the land uses are already approved, it makes it a little bit more challenging to just say no. Because we don't have design standards for the O three zoning district. We don't have anything specific other than our existing screening and landscaping requirements that we have for parking lots.
Christy, can you show me on the map the setbacks? It's what I would call the rear of the property.
Along the south lot line?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a, well, you can see there's a dotted line, and this is a 30-foot setback along that area, and the building, as it's proposed, the building envelope is probably going to be further setback than that. With the R three zoning, you would normally be required only a 20-foot setback. So the setback shown on this site plan exceeds that of the district.
The reason why I ask is with the increased height requirement, I thought, is, so is that why they're saying the setbacks are, are increased and that's kind of why you guys are leaning towards allowing the increased height?
Well, in this one, with this particular development, because of the constraints of the pipeline planning area, we weren't, although the building on this end would go up to 50 feet, we weren't requiring a 50-foot setback from that property line because they're already, with those residential units being scrunched, for lack of a better word, south of that 221 feet. And they will provide per, screening to meet the multifamily standard in that 30-foot setback. And one of the conditions was that the building orientations generally stay the same because the impact of the building, this is just a corner that could potentially be 30 feet from the, the property line. It's just that corner, so you're not going to have a lot of windows overlooking the property to the south, balconies, other things that can sometimes be a nuisance to adjacent property owners.
The next kind of corner that's close to the south boundary there, is that also 30 feet? I'm so tiny, I'm sorry.
This one over here?
Yeah.
That, that is a building envelope that also comes down to 30 feet.
About the same thing.
Yeah, and that's a proposed future expansion.
Okay.
This, this area here. But again, it is at an angle, and so we're not putting an entire side of a building right up against the residential.
And how much does it enter your determination that to the south of these are acreages? So when you're looking at the map, the actual house is not right up against the lot line. You know, it's even, you know, farther south. I'm assuming that that also gives you more setbacks so that they're not right on top of each other.
That would give you more setback. I think that our major consideration had to do with the orientation of the building, the screening that would be provided, because all those, those are acreages to the south. Forever and ever, they may not be acreages to the south, and so we were really trying to focus mitigating the impact of the increase in height and how we would mitigate that impact on this property.
Thank you. So it's the main reason that you're not in favor of the design standards or keeping some Design standards, or keeping some kind of design standards? Since they can't build residences there, anyway, they would be limited to, to businesses, basically. Is, is that the main reason why you don't want it to be office?
Are you specifically talking about Area Three?
Yeah.
Area Three, it's because we just don't have a site plan. And again, we have what we consider to be a residential use appropriate in a residential zoning district with this healthcare facility. And we have residential uses to the east. And so to have commercial and office uses in the middle of those two, um, at, with this overall development, doesn't make sense, unless there is a specific site plan that can show us how that site would develop and how it would work well with the adjacent property. And the property's on the other side of 52nd Street.
Any other questions for Kristi? All right, um, applicant, you have an opportunity for rebuttal.
Well, first of all, thank you for your time getting into the weeds here. Uh, we appreciate this. Um, I think, right now, I think Kristi's absolutely right. If we, whatever we put over on the Phase Two area, we have to come back in for an administrative amendment. So there is site review. I, I'm not an expert, Rick Pyle would be, but if we didn't agree, you know, with whatever the planning director said, I, I assume it goes up the food chain to planning commission and/or council for final decision-making. So there is a site plan that we will do. If you want to be extra careful and say the site plan should come for sure back to planning commission, you know, that's better than getting beat up and getting nothing out of this deal. So, you know, that would be our secondary choice.
Any questions? Okay. We'll move on to entertaining a motion, and they need to be called separately.
Okay. First item is annexation number 15004 to annex approximately 21 acres more or less, including adjacent rights of way generally located at 4949 Yankee Hill Road, between South 48th and South 52nd Street. Condition, our staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Move approval. Second. Discussion?
I think the annexation looks good. I, I know there's some issues with the, with the sewer pipelines, but I think they're going to be worked out. And so I have no hesitations about the annexation.
Um, I, I agree. I assume the motion to amend applies to the change of zone and not to the annexation. So I don't see a reason to not move forward with supporting the annexation at this time. Are we ready to call the vote on that?
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero. Change of zone number 15013. Eastmont at Yankee Hill, planned unit development for a change of zone from AG Agriculture to R-three residential PUD on property generally located at South 52nd Street and Yankee Hill Road, for a planned unit development designation of said property, and for approval of a development plan, which proposes modifications to the zoning ordinance and land subdivision ordinance to allow a residential healthcare facility and associated uses, office uses and residential uses for the R-three zoning district. Staff, staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
I'd like to offer an amendment, um, to the change of zone. This is my first time doing this, so be patient with me, please. Um, instead of having the administrative amendment for those areas that are for future development, I would feel better if they would come back before the planning commission for approval, without just, does that make sense?
So, are, are you saying you want to approve the applicant's motion to amend, but with extra conditions?
I wanted to come back before planning commission, when they have a site plan for that extra area.
For Area Three?
Yes.
Okay, so, but, just procedurally, right now, if you approved, their, Area Three only comes into play as an O-three if you approve the applicant's motion to amend.
Well, it also comes into play, because right now, if you look at the staff report, they are asking just for an administrative amendment. And I'm, I'm saying, I'm, I'm not really crazy about that. I'd rather it come before planning commission.
What just happens with an administrative amendment?
The planning director can approve it without...
No, I mean, if it stays residential, you still want more than administrative approval?
I guess not.
The way the motion currently stands is it's going to stay residential, is that right?
That's correct.
So they're going to have to come before the planning commission, if they want to change it to, at all.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
So you want...
So no amendment, I guess?
Okay. But do you want the approved, um, amendments, except for Area Three? Okay, so you're just going, just move approval as stated in the original staff report? Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, discussion? I, I think that the only item that was not approved by the planning staff on the applicant's motion to amend was just the two words "and" three in condition two point two. So I don't see a reason why we wouldn't at least put forward, um, those, and approve those motions to amend. Um, Area Three, you know, since this is discussion period, I, is frankly, a very hard decision for me, because, um, I'm dealing with two things, I think, with this application that are very frustrating, um, to the planning commission. And number one is, we now have this planning, the pipeline planning area that, you're correct, has not been before a public hearing, but has basically become a condition of approval in this area. I support, having sat through the briefings about what can happen in these pipeline areas, that there should be restrictions in building in these areas. But I certainly understand, from a development perspective, when there's really no notice, that that's what's going to be happening. It just started to be a recommendation from the Health Department, how perhaps people in that situation should be, should be allowed additional accommodations for their development. And the second area of frustration is that, you know, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? Because I think Mr. Seacrest has a very valid point, that if we don't initially zone it as O-three, is that really fair to the neighbors in the area? When they come back and later want a change of zone as O-three, does it make more sense to have the notice ahead of time, even though we might be giving up some site-specific planning oversight on that? On the other hand, we don't have, uh, design standards. So we really could be approving something in the dark without the design standards. And so, you know, there's three frustrations I've just expressed. But as a whole, I, I think I'm more in favor to giving notice of, to people ahead of time, and approving the change of zone to O-three at this point in time, just because of the constraints in this particular area, and how you would even develop, um, an office district in Area Two, if you don't have Area Three also added onto that. The constraints that we've already put on the property. And I think, in addition to that, while this is a residential healthcare facility, it is in the nature of a major type of commercial building. And it seems to me that O-three, in that situation, makes sense as a buffer. Even though we're calling this residential, it's still going to be a big building footprint. And I think O-three makes a lot of sense as kind of a buffer between that and the residential acreages that we have on both sides of that, especially since Area Four is going to stay residential. So that's my thoughts, Dennis.
I, I want to just add, I, I agree with Janelle. Um, I'm not going to vote for the motion as moved. I love your project. But I, I believe that Area Two, it'll be really difficult to plan Area Two without the O-three change of zone in Area Three. I said that right? So, um, Janelle just said it in a lot more detail than I just did, but I'm going to vote against the motion in hopes that we can bring the O-three zoning to Area Two, or Area Three back in.
And I agree with what you both just said. Plus, I think that entranceway road is more of a buffer than just a, a fence line. So I would agree with that.
My concerns are, um, O-three can be used as a buffer between residential and commercial, but I don't think it's a good... This would be, to me, it's more spot zoning. Um, you're putting it in between two residentials. And that doesn't, I don't like that very well. I understand where you're coming from, where it's easier to do it O-three now, um, so that people have that predictability in the future. But I, I have some qualms about making it O-three now without being able to see. I mean, what about an RT? I, I mean, I don't know if that would be appropriate there either, but, um, I just, I, I'm not sure an O-three right in the middle of two residentials is really appropriate.
Any other comments?
I just echo what Janelle said. This is a, a situation where I wish we had design standards. It, it would make it a lot easier to, um, know what we're getting and, and saying yes. But, but even so, I, I support what Janelle and, and Dennis said. And I will also vote for that, if, if this motion before us fails.
Yeah, and I think the, um, pipeline is going to just force us to really look at how we're doing our traditional zoning, or light-to-heavy type of situation, and really take into account the pipeline area, which is not a regulation, which is not on the books. Yet we are kind of going forward like it is. Um, and O-two or O-three is a buffer between commercial and residential. Therefore, it can sit next to residential. Therefore, it can sit next to residential on both sides, in my mind. And, um, like Dennis was saying, the one lot itself will be difficult to develop without having two lots. And I think they will have a better development if they have the two lots to work with. And not to completely repeat what Janelle said, letting everyone know that it's O-three ahead of time, I think, makes sense.
And one more thing to add, actually, Area Two is putting O-three in between two residential to start with.
Yeah. Okay, so I think the motion before us that we need to vote on right now was the approval of the change of zone as amended, except for the words "and" three.
The motion was no amendment?
No amendment?
It's just the main motion.
Okay, all right, so let's vote on just the main motion with no amendments at all.
That's correct.
Okay, let's call the vote on that.
Cornelius?
No.
Cor?
No.
Harris?
No.
Shear?
No.
Sunderman?
No.
Weber?
No.
Poe?
No.
Lust?
No.
Motion failed.
Okay, I'd move approval as amended, as proposed by the applicant.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Um, I just wanted to say, in a perfect world, Eastmont will expand, they'll have way more demand that they need, and we won't even have to worry about this going to O-three.
And one, one more thing I'd like to add. I would like to have more specific regulations on the pipeline. It's really a hard thing to deal with.
All right, are we ready to call the vote on that? Please do so. Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried.
To zero, um, including applicant's amendment. Next item is item 4.4, text amendment 15004, an ordinance amending Title 27 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the zoning code by amending Sections 27.06, .080, 27.63, .530, and 27.72, .010 to allow healthcare facility residential as a special permitted use in the AG zoning district on a lot which has five or more acres. Amending Section 27.63090 to allow dwellings for members of religious orders on a lot which has five or more acres. And repealing Sections 27.06, .080, 27.090, 27.63530, and 27.72010 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing. Staff recommendation is for approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed at this time?
I see none.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. The applicant on this is Design Associates, that has submitted on behalf of Marcia Stork, the owner of Emerald Care Facility. Uh, this text amendment is necessary for the item that was on the consent agenda. The consent agenda was a special permit for residential healthcare facility in, um, AG zoning that was just outside of the city limits. It's at 5500 South Cottington. That residential healthcare facility has actually already been there for 10 years. They got a building permit as a group home, um, but then have really been operating as such as a residential healthcare facility. And this came to our attention. Uh, we realized that we needed to, uh, do something, either legalize the site, or the site use needed to stop. Um, so the applicant submitted a change of zone to change the text. Um, we have been working with them, because as we started to realize how the couple of things they needed to have done, um, it required some reformatting. And so that is why you have several sections of text here adjusted, including members of a religious order, which really has nothing to do with this particular applicant. Um, but when it became clear, when there was two different things they needed done, we needed to, to change the format. So the two items that they have are this. Uh, currently, a residential healthcare facility is not allowed in AG agricultural zoning. So the first part of their text amendment is to allow a residential healthcare facility, which would range on the scale from a smaller facility, as this Emerald Care facility is, which might have 10, 15, 30, or 40 people in it, um, all the way up to residential healthcare facility of the scale that you just had with Eastmont at Yankee Hill, which could be 300 or 400 people on 10 to 15 acres. Um, so the First Amendment, and we agreed that there, while we wouldn't want to see a very large facility like Eastmont out in a rural area on well and septic with, um, less services, uh, we do think there are some healthcare providers that do want to find themselves in a more rural setting. Uh, certainly, that has, appears to be successful for Emerald Care, that their facility, assisted living facility, has been sitting there for 10 years quite successfully, and that there are customers who are interested in that. So several of the amendments are to allow residential healthcare facilities, still by special permit, it wouldn't be a permitted use, they'd still have to go through a site plan review. Uh, the second part of the amendment that's necessary for Emerald Care is that currently, they would be required to have a 20-acre lot. The lot that they have is much smaller than that, it is seven acres. And so they have an amendment which would allow this type of a special permitted use on a lot as small as five acres. Um, and we agreed with that, that there are certain kind of uses that, um, particularly in group living, that might need to be on smaller properties. Already, in the AG district, we allow greenhouses on lots as small as two acres, pet cemeteries on lots as small as five, tree services on undersized lots, and dwellings for members of religious order. We also just recently allowed on lots as small as five acres. Um, and so format-wise, we're saying it's better than, or currently, where we have a big, long list in one section, and then it's repeated over in the special permit section. We're removing the list, um, over in the heightened lot, because it is just simply too confusing for us and for the, the public as well. So in essence, that's all of this text amendment is doing, is allowing the residential healthcare facility a special... facility a special permit in the AG district and on lots as small as five acres. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How did you guys decide, and maybe it's a nationwide standard, for the one person for 5,000 square feet?
Thank you for mentioning that. It's just simply that in the R1, it was 1 to 3,000. We were looking at something that would have fewer persons than that per lot area, but you still have a very large lot where you would still be able to have quite a bit of setbacks. Again, in a three or five or six-acre lot, yes, this may allow upwards of 50 or 60 persons, but given the amount of setbacks, the amount of areas that we're there, we thought it could still be appropriate, even though we still don't view this as going up to something as large as having 300 people. Again, by having a special permit, it is still something that can be done on a case-by-case basis. You would look at the appropriateness of that.
Steve, could you walk me through why, under the use type, we're now X-ing out greenhouses, pet cemeteries, dwellings for a religious order?
Sure, that, that-
On page 119.
Right. That part of the text amendment, again, is mostly just having to deal with the format. This is actually the table that is in the height and lot section of it.
Okay.
And under heightened lot, it lists, here's the size lot you need to have. That information is already over in other sections of the zoning ordinance, so it's in two places. So we're X-ing it out here rather than trying to maintain it in two places. We're saying it's best just maintained over in the other sections.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thanks. Do we have testimony from the applicant?
Jeremy Williams with Design Associates, 1609 N Street.
Did you say "N"?
N Street, yes. I really don't have anything to add to what Steve, I think Steve adequately covered everything. Really, this application is just to clean up the situation we have out there zoning-wise.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you for coming forward.
Thanks.
Do we have additional testimony in support of the application? Testimony in opposition? Did we think of anything that we didn't ask Steve? All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
We've got one of those situations where we have an existing use that is not necessarily in conformance with the zoning. The change doesn't seem particularly onerous, and we maintain a degree of control by putting it under the special permit process. As was observed, it seems like this kind of healthcare facility in a rural setting might have value, both to the residents and to the owners, and I think it's a worthwhile change.
To keep or to allow smaller facilities like this to develop on a smaller parcel to kind of help preserve that ag land.
All right, let's call the vote. Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Co?
Yes.
Lust? Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero. Okay, the next item is text amendment number 15007, amending Section 27.06, .070 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the household living use group to allow dwellings for caretakers as a permitted use in the B1, B2, and B3 zoning districts, and repealing Section 27.06, .070 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing. Staff recommendation is for approval. Are there any ex parte communications to disclose on this application?
I see none.
Good afternoon, Brian Will, Playing Department. I guess I'd characterize this as a fairly minor amendment. This is being brought forward by Lori Tackett. Lori owns a kennel and has found a property in town that fits in every respect except for the fact that she would like to have somebody that stays on the property 24 hours a day. This particular amendment affects only one use and three zoning districts, and that is, the particular use is dwellings for caretakers, resident watchmen, and supervisory personnel. That particular use is allowed in all the commercial and industrial zoning districts except the B1, B2, and B3 districts. This amendment for you today would amend the ordinance and allow it actually in B1, B2, and B3. Most recently, or the most recent amendment that we did affecting this particular use was relative to the I-3 zoning district, which would have been the fourth one where it was not allowed. And really, the concern, the only concern there, and I don't think it was left out by intent, I think the only concern there with allowing it was here we were opening up potentially an industrial zoning district, allowing now full-time resident or residential use. But that amendment was approved. I think, so one of the questions that was raised, you know, during reviewing, doing the discussion is, well, why is it this loud in all the other commercial districts except the B1, B2, and B3? Well, I don't think we have an exact answer, but I think it's probably a result of two things. Number one, probably just didn't anticipate there was going to be those types of uses allowed in Havelock, University Place, in the B1 and B3 districts, where you would have a full-time residential caretaker. Something typically associated with maybe an industrial use that has outdoor storage and wants to protect it, or warehousing, something like that. Just don't maybe think about it in those districts. The other thing I think that could partly be, partly have a role is that the B1 and B3, which are those commercial, the districts in our older commercial areas around town, as I mentioned, University Place, Havelock, College View, they do have a prohibition against residential uses on the first floor. And so one could look at this use and suggest that, well, I could legally operate the caretaker, and that use moves out, and I don't have a need for caretaker, and I rent it out as an apartment. I suppose that, and we did mention that concern, Building and Safety had mentioned it, excuse me. So that concern is there, although I'd note that if someone were to do that, that would, you know, technically not meet the requirements of the ordinance. But I would say that today too, though, allowing residential uses on the first floor of B1 and B3 is not the concern that it was 20 or 30 years ago.
What, John?